Good evening, I'm Willis Curti. I'm going to be the moderator this evening for our forum. We have seated at the front desk six of the nine candidates who are running for Missoula County Public Schools Board of Trustees. Rose Dixon has a class tonight, so she won't be here until maybe later. And two low area candidates chose not to respond, and so they won't be here. Anyway, I'd like the opportunity to introduce Scott Todd, Julie Tompkins, Joe Toth,
Toth, T-O-T-H.
Scott Bixler, Diane Lorenzen, and Michael Beers. So the format tonight will be a question and answer. Mary Grace, back over here in the black with the pink blouse, will be collecting questions as we go through this evening. Pam Walser, right here in the lavender, will be our timekeeper. She will show a yellow sheet at 30 seconds to go with your questions, and then she'll give you the stop signal. Okay, first of all, we'll have an introduction by each candidate. Those introductions will be two minutes in length, includes a bio and reasons why they are running for the board. And then we'll have questions from the audience. Again, Mary will collect them, and we'll have, we'll try to run around five questions. I think that's pretty much about the time we're going to have. And then, at the end, each candidate will be able to use one minute to give a summation of why they're running for the board. Okay, so I'm first going to begin with the lead question. And we'll start with Michael at that end. We'll reverse things, so Michael doesn't answer the question first of all. First question is, on your questionnaire, you stated three objectives that you would move to accomplish.
Introduce yourselves.
Huh?
Introduce yourselves and why you're running for the board.
Huh, okay. You can prepare, but state the three reasons why you are running for the board, your objectives, after we do our introductions. So I'll give you a little chance to think about it, and go from there. Okay, so Michael, if you would start with your introduction and reason why you're running for the board.
All right, um, first of all, well, thank you for having me. I'm just going to try not to do too many jokes, but when I get speaking in public, it happens. So, um, I grew up here in Missoula, went through, oh, microphone, I'm sorry.
I'm sure you need that.
Thank you.
That does fit, okay.
All right.
The green is all, is it all in green?
Oh, you got me, all right. So my name is Michael Beers. I grew up here in Missoula, went through Missoula County Public Schools K through 12 as a special education student. I graduated in '01 from Hellgate High School. And since then, I've been, in addition to going to the university, worked at Summit Independent Living Center, which is a nonprofit that works to help people with disabilities of all ages achieve independence. And my job there is primarily focused on youth with disabilities and in special ed. So I do a lot of work in the schools with that transition from high school to whatever's next in their lives. I also, since 2001, have been a stand-up comedian in the community and throughout the country. It was actually my senior project coming out of Missoula County Public Schools, and it stuck. So, um, that's a little bit about me, my short bio, and I'll move this very large microphone. So in my questionnaire, the three things that I listed was first making sure that every student in Missoula County Public Schools has access to a future. So one of the things, you know, I'm focused on in my work as a, through Summit and as a student who went through the special education system, is the idea that everyone has a future, and I'm getting in the stop sign.
Yeah, if we focus just the first go around on your bio or the reason why you're running for the board.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted me to answer the-
And the reason why you're running for the board.
So we get two minutes for the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
About 30 seconds. 30 seconds, 30 seconds when you started answering the other question.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, um, see, you can tell what kind of student I was. All right, so making sure that every student has a future, not simply just graduation, but a future. Then we're investing as much in our human resources, teacher, par educators, ASL interpreters, communication therapists, as we are in technologies and new programs. And I want to be a part of a school board and an education system that Missoula can be proud of. And that isn't necessarily in the news for the wrong reasons.
Diane?
Hello, my name's Diane Lorenzen, Diane Rasmussen-Lorenzen. I grew up in Missoula, went to DSMAT grade school and Hellgate High School. I graduated in 1979. From there, I went to Stanford University in civil engineering, and that was a wonderful opportunity. But at the end of the time at Stanford, I had kind of a gut reaction to wealth and privilege, and I joined the Peace Corps and went to Nepal for two years. Since then, I've worked as an environmental engineer, got married, I've raised three kids. Two are in colleges here in Montana, and one is in middle school at Washington Middle School. And the reasons, and I work as an environmental engineer and I have, like, for 30 years. And I think it brings a level of critical thinking to problems. I've sort of trained myself to look for what's not there, rather than just what's being presented to me. I did eight years on the school board at Clancy Elementary School near Helena, and four years on the school board at Jefferson High School in Boulder, Montana. And I really enjoy school board work. I think I could bring a lot of experience to the Missoula school board. And so one of the reasons I'm running is because I enjoy it and I want to get back into it. We moved back to Missoula two years ago. Also, when I see a lot of stress in the newspaper, I'm a little bit like a canary. I'm the first one to get stressed out, and it really bothers me. And so I'd like to see if we couldn't get better relations between the school board and the community, and try to calm things down a little bit. So I guess that's pretty much the reason I'm running, and I have 30 seconds. I'm an engineer.
Me either.
I'm done.
Did you say we don't need this mic? Okay, I'll get it out of our way. Hi, my name's Scott Bixler. I moved here from Helena when I graduated in 1971 and never left. I'm very, very fortunate. I went to the University of Montana, got my degree in education, and promptly went to work for the Forest Service. Because, of course, education and the Forest Service go hand in hand. I love the place, I have enjoyed my life here, it's been wonderful. It's a wonderful place to raise kids. I have three kids. One was, one graduated two years ago and is now attending the University of Montana, student in journalism. You can pick up his copy of The Kymon, he's a sports writer, and he's in there quite often, I'm very proud of him. And I have twin daughters, Lindsay and Christie, who are juniors at Sentinel High School. I've been on the board for nine years, and I started this process at a time of great strife. It was a very divided school board, there were some very difficult issues facing the school district at the time. And I felt that I could bring a sense of moderation to the school board, and keep everyone on an even keel, and work well with others. At that time, our meetings would go until 1, 2 o'clock in the morning, and they were quite acrimonious. I felt, as Diane mentioned, that a certain continuity and an ability to work well with others is a real strength that you need to have, and something that I bring to the school board after the last nine years working on it. So I enjoy the work, I think we've done a great job. I would like to continue on moving the district in the direction that we've started on. Thank you very much.
Ready? Hello, I'm Joe Toth, I'm with Scott. I've been on the board for nine years. I was, been a resident of Missoula since 1978, and I am freshly retired from this, where we are sitting right now, serving the city of Missoula for those times. My kids went to the school system here. I got involved with the schools at an early age. I was PTA, I was one of the few PTA presidents of around my gender. And forever on, I've been involved in my kids' education. My kids got a great education at Missoula. We've always had good schools here. We have a good school system in this community, and we've worked toward keeping that, always pushing forward. We've been very grateful for the staff and the wonderful teachers. I wanted to keep that going on, that prompted me a lot. I was with Scott at the same time. I just, we just wanted to bring some common sense to the board of decisions that were tough with the community. And since then, we've had a great nine years. I think the school district's done a lot of good things. I like some of the directions we go. There hasn't been bump, you know, everything's bumpy along the way, a little bit now and then. And that's one of the reasons I want to stay on the board, I want to move us on again. We're a good board, we work well together, we deliberate, we don't all agree. We have understood the mechanics of how the boards are working now. And so we've been able to focus ahead on not board acrimony issues, education issues. And it's worked out really well, and I want to keep that going. That's kind of, I, you know, that was what drove me to make sure I ran again this year for another term. And two daughters, adult daughters, they're out, adult now actually. One's just about to get her graduate degree from University of Oregon. Hope she gets a really well-paying job.
Hi, everyone, my name is Julie Tompkins, and I moved here in 1998. I went to MSU, which is Michigan State University, so don't automatically pigeonhole me as MSU other.
And we have Spartans too.
That's right. I work currently at the University of Montana. I've worked there for 14 years. I started out at the Rural Institute on Disabilities, and I currently work for the Environmental Studies Program. I administer grants for the Environmental Studies Program. And I actually am a small business owner in addition to that. I have a diaper service, and I had a store on Higgins called Nature Boy. And we do that in addition to the time that I put in at the university. I also have a nine-year-old who is currently at Paxson Elementary School. And the reason why I'm running for school board is I believe the school board needs a greater representation of socio-economic diversity, meaning lower to middle-income people. I don't believe that it has that currently, and I believe it needs that. And I also am very, very dedicated to public education. I believe that that should be a priority in our community, and if it's not anymore, it should be again. And so that's my drive. I will talk about the, my top three objectives later, but my overwhelming objective is public education. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Scott Todd. I am a school board member, I have been for seven weeks now. I have three children, one of whom, I have an adult daughter who went through MCPS. I have a son who is at Hellgate right now, and another son who is at Washington. I've been an engineer for more decades than I'd like to admit, so I'm very committed to STEM education. I have my son, who is at Hellgate right now, is of course a singer, so he's taught me the value of the arts. We've had a lot of discussion about that around our house. And then my other son wants to weld, doesn't want to be an engineer, nobody wants to follow in my path. So my family represents some diversity of opinion. I value diversity of opinion, some days more than others. I value service, and that's why I want to be here. Missoula has a great school system. I am thrilled to be here. My children are lucky to be here, and I want to keep this school system great for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thanks everybody. So we'll start with the next question, and that is the three objectives, the priorities as school board members. We'll start with Scott Bixler, and we'll rotate this way and back to Diane. Pardon? Yeah, some people are having problems using the microphone or hearing you, so if you'd use the microphone, we'd appreciate it. Thank you guys.
Okay, top three objectives, boy, that's hard. There's so many objectives that we have at the school board. We have to balance so many issues. And really, basically, what it comes down to is there is a certain set amount of money that we're allocated through the legislative process, and then the best way to allocate that money that does the best for our students, our staff, our community. These are the basics of what we do. We take care of your kids, and we take care of your money. And there isn't anything more important, I think, to the people of Missoula than those two issues right there. We really have a quandary most of the time in that the resources don't balance all the things that we want to do. So how do you prioritize? What are those objectives? Well, number one, everything that I do, every decision I make focuses on the students. Hard to say, it's not the taxpayer, it's not the staff, it's not the administrators, it's the kids. That's why I'm here, that's what I do. The number one priority doesn't always work out, but to try and keep class sizes as small as possible. We've got a wonderful primary grade structure. Primary is different than elementary, primary is kindergarten first and second. And we keep those class sizes under 20. Unfortunately, in third grade and up into the other grades, those class sizes go up quite rapidly. And I want to try and keep it as small as I possibly can. I also want to offer our students the maximum selection of courses that they can get. I want them to be able to have the advanced courses, as well as the introductory courses, the fine arts, the industrial arts, as many things, the broadest spectrum that we can have for our kids that's possible. And then also, we do have staff, and the best working conditions that we can provide for those individuals need to be made. Thanks.
My three priorities are to, generally, to maintain the great school district we have. But one of them, in no particular order of importance, that I thought, I think has always been important, it was important to my kids going, growing up, and seeing what this community values, is the art programs, which are oftentimes, as Scott just mentioned too, we have tough decisions to make sometimes when it comes to the allocation of the resources and the priorities in the district. And it's a tough call sometimes, it's not like the board has a lot of, you know, sometimes we have budgets presented to us, and then sometimes that's staff reductions. So it's balancing the staff, trying to do the best for our staff, but we have these priorities, a couple of things on that. So the fair, the fairness and equity of our budget for everybody is something I'm really trying to push for, all our staff across that. We know they work hard, it's where the, it's where, you know, the rubber meets the road is in the classroom, where all those people are doing the wonderful work across our district. And I want to have a fairness and, you know, balance of budget for those people out there. There's another priority applying across the district. And then, you know, and then to kind of, another priority, like Scott says, we've gone through, we have a good set of board goals, and it's, and it's nice to just reflect back on that. Our first board goal is that we want success for every student in this district. And we kind of think of that as a priority. So a maintenance of that priority is always important. It's hard to get pulled apart. I want to move ahead of the things, one of my priorities is to keep the school district and the school board moving ahead well, working well together like we've done, and keep the good things going in our district. So, that's it.
I would say my number one priority, because I volunteer in the school system quite a bit, and I see teachers and talk to them and staff members, and know that they're strapped for supplies, they're strapped for a number of things. And they also are increasingly given different things that they need to accomplish in their daily routine that they don't get extra anything for. And so my greatest objective is to make sure that teachers and staff are supported as much as possible and equitably, and the morale in our schools goes up again, because it's not great right now, let's say that. My second objective, I would also like to increase the arts and sciences, because I have a third grader who receives virtually no science education, other than what I can provide for him outside of school. And I think that's shameful. I feel like we have a very standardized system right now. We teach to national norms, that not everybody fits into that cookie cutter shape. And I think we need to look at that and increase the amount of education for everybody, regardless of whether or not they can do the math and the reading to the national standards. I also want to keep class size small, because I have a third grader, and I think that third graders deserve a small class just as much as kindergarten through two. I don't want people to get lost in that system, and I receive the support that they deserve.
Okay, my, my three priorities are, first of all, graduation. You know, one of the best things that we can do for all our citizens is have a graduate, an educated citizenry. Missoula has the best graduation rate in the state. I think that that is something we should all be proud of, but it needs support, and it needs to get better. There are dropouts in our system, and that needs to, to the extent possible, to stop happening. We have a lot of schools, I'd like to keep them open. My wife went to Jefferson, since closed. And neighborhood schools are, you know, very important. And at the same time, since we have great schools, we have a diversity of program. For instance, this year, or next year, we're starting a language immersion program at Paxson. So that gives people choices. Lewis and Clark, we're hoping an IB program can start there. You know, the more choices that we can give people, the more good schools that we can give people, the better off we are. So if we can keep the schools open, and the kids graduating, and give them lots of things to do, I think we're all better off for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Since I gave my three priorities already in the first question, I'll just go back to say one of the things that I'm really hoping to do on this board, and this is not to say anything about the current board, is to add my perspective. Because as a person that went through the system, as someone who heard the word term "red flag" a lot in their IEPs and Individualized Education Plan and parent-teacher conferences, I never felt like a red flag in our system. I always felt very supportive, and there's a lot of individuals and a lot of teachers I have to thank for that, who saw something in me that I didn't even see at that point. So that's one reason I'm, and the main reason I'm running, is to give back to that system. And I really want to take a look at, you know, I think it's great that we're bringing money in from different places now, but where are we putting that money? So the, I seen a lot in the paper, the Spanish immersion school. And that's a great thing, I would never say that's bad. But do we have every student in the district with a first language? So before we concentrate on giving people a second, do we have enough interpreters? Do we have enough speech therapists to serve the students in our district that need those things? And when it comes to teaching someone a foreign language, what if you don't speak English? What if you speak American Sign Language? How does that fit into your second language curriculum? And are those perspectives being used and looked at in the schools? And really, like we mentioned a few times, shift the focus back to our students. And not just at a board level, but being more transparent, the board being more transparent to students. So meeting them where they're at. You know, I'm not going to give you an iPad in the classroom and ignore the fact that you don't have electricity at home that can't support that iPad. You know, how can we support you at home, so you're feeling supported all throughout your day? That's my priority, thank you.
So the question is, what were the three priorities as listed on the questionnaire? And to be honest, I didn't bring the questionnaire, it was the first one I filled out, and I've done a lot of thinking and filling out questionnaire since, so I don't remember what I wrote. My first priority would be to support music and the arts. I think that music is the hallmark of the Missoula school system. I went to Portland with the All-City Orchestra this winter on the bus, and there were four buses from Missoula, Montana at the Northwest Festival. And that's not something to be taken for granted or to be pushed aside. We're looking at an international baccalaureate program that's supposed to improve sophistication amongst our students, and there's nothing more sophisticated than music. I think it's incredibly important, and the arts as well. The arts and the industrial arts. I think that kids need to learn to express themselves creatively through the arts. Our kids, when they graduate, are looking at 50 years of work before they can even think about retiring. And in those 50 years, today's iPad or today's latest technology is going to be the electronic typewriter. I mean, it's just going to be gone. So we have to make sure we focus on educational basics and give them life skills that they gain from music and arts. I'm in engineering, and it's a good career, it's a good way to get started, but I really encourage my kids to go into more creative fields, fields where 20 years into their career, they don't feel obsolete. So I think the music and arts are incredibly important. And we can't take for granted that they will, they will maintain themselves while we add a bunch of extra stuff. My second priority is to improve the board community relations. And I know the board says they have debate, but I was at the meeting, and every vote was unanimous. And that's just statistically improbable that 11 people can vote unanimously on every issue. So I think it's important for the board to register their, their true vote at the public meeting, rather than all agree to vote unanimously in public. And you'll read that in the paper too.
Okay, for our next question, there have been a number of questions there sent on the recent board decision concerning Dr. Appels's raise. So we'll make this part of a two-part question. First, if you were on the board, if you're running for the board and were not incumbent, would you have voted for the raise and why, or not? And for those who are on the board, tell me, I'd like to tell the crowd if you voted for the raise and why you did. Anyway, and we'll start with Julie.
Thank you. I am not on the board, so if I were on the board at the time of the proposed raise, I would not have voted for. I believe that public education functions as an entity. It's not one person that drives it. We may say that, we may call a superintendent a CEO, which I think is terrible. It brings to mind a bunch of little workers being raised, and I don't think our students are little workers. I believe a superintendent should model behavior, and I think he should model the same behavior from administration to teachers to staff to crossing guards. And everybody should be compensated fairly and equitably, not one person receiving a line share. That goes for every facet of life, not just public education.
I, I would, I am on the board. Um, I was not on the board when the, when the vote was taken. Uh, I believe that, uh, had I been there, I would have voted against the raise.
Um, and in my questionnaire, I was very honest about this question. Um, if I'm lucky enough to receive a seat, I'm going to be doing a lot of homework and some of that homework is going to be around salaries and dispersion and really those decisions you guys have to make. So I can't say that I wouldn't, would have been against it. I can say that I don't fully understand from a citizen's point of view, the justification behind it. In reading the evaluations, um, on the, on the district website of Dr. Apostle and the justification for the raise, it was, it was a little redundant. From every evaluation I read, it cited almost word for word the same things, um, in, um, being for the raise and his direction of the schools. And I, I fail to see how that can coexist with a number of parents and teachers who give up their very busy time and schedules to protest that very same raise. So where is the disconnect between the board and the student and the teachers happening? Um, and how can we be more transparent and how can we work better together, um, with the students to make sure that they're the ones making the paper and they're the ones that we're talking about as a community?
So the question is about Dr. Apostles' raise and would I have voted for it? I think the raise is excessive. I did do some homework. Typically in Montana, the superintendent salary has been two times the highest teacher salary. And from what I found at the time that this superintendent started, that's where he was at. The series of raises that preceded have got him at, in 2014, he'll be at three teacher salaries. And that's just outside the norm for Montana and we just can't afford it. Um, I'm also concerned that there's three assistant superintendents. I, I checked out Gray Falls, Gray Falls is actually a bigger district and they have two assistant superintendents and they pay their superintendent, but they're bidding the job right now at a hundred and forty-four thousand. I understand that Dr. Apostle brings a lot to the table and he does a great job, but the amount a person is paid, it depends on what their employer can afford to pay them. And in Montana, the schools can't afford to pay those kind of salaries. As a board member, I would work to make sure that our incoming superintendent did not expect to be paid at that same level when, when Dr. Apostles' contract is over. Um, it's just a precedent we can't afford to set. I'm sure the other schools in the state are, are screaming because they can't match that money. Um, I, I think that, you know, if there are jobs that pay more, I work as a civil engineer. I get paid with government dollars for the most part. It, it doesn't pay like electrical engineering. It, you just get paid what your employer can afford to pay you, not necessarily what you're worth. Um, teachers certainly are worth a lot more, but this, we can't afford to pay them and so we pay them what we pay them. Um, so I think that that position, once that, that, that salary reached a level of 125% of what it was originally advertised at, I think the board should have at least re-advertised the position. Um, to make sure that they would, that they had the same pool of candidates to choose from at that, you know, three, three teacher salary rate, um, then they might have had a whole different pool of candidates if they had re-advertised at that point.
Uh, I am on the board, I voted against the raise. And if you really want to know the reasons why I did, it's in the public comment. It, you can look it up on, 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 online. I would stop here, but I love to hear myself talk and, uh, I, I'm not going to waste two minutes. And it brings to mind, I've been on the board for nine years and I've seen trustees come and go. One of my favorite trustees didn't last very long, is Laurie Faust. He was a teacher at Sentinel High School, world history, 37 years. He brought a lot to the board, but he, he, he didn't feel that he was being able to do what he wanted to do. And in his resignation, he, he talked about a term called democratic centralism, centralism. And it, that's a good one, I had to go look it up. Uh, and if you look it up, it'll, it'll be interesting for you to find out exactly what it means. But basically, what it talks about is freedom of discussion, unity of action. And that is what our board subscribes to, is that during committee meetings where most of the work gets done, the board, every member is free to discuss, make his views or her views known, argue, politic, do whatever they want at that time and try and convince everyone to their way of thinking, ask questions, ask the hard questions, look for more information. Once the vote is done, then the board stands united. There are a lot of votes that I haven't agreed with on the board, but I don't complain about them after they're done because the board has spoken and we have to move on. And the fastest way that we can bring divisiveness and keep our names in the newspaper is to be arguing after a decision's been made. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Um, I didn't, I'm on the board, makes sense for it, I don't care. Uh, I did not vote for the raise. Pretty nail on the head. We can't afford, that was kind of the first thing, I was, it's like, our money things were being pushed on other fronts anyway and we were skimping on other things and I don't think that was a good use of district money. We all know the pay equity of Missoula, Montana, you know, you have the old joke goes, you know, how many Missoula districts take a screw in the light bulb? Only one, but there's 500 applicants for the job. And you know, so that's our economy, it's what we live in here in Missoula. You know, I've lived here like since 78 and raised two kids, you know, so it's what, again, what we can afford on that, that was a big driving factor for me. Um, but, and then I'd like to second one, Mr. Bixler was saying here about our committee meetings and stuff. And so sometimes the ideas that have come out on, uh, we were voting for something, and then there's a lot of consent stuff done that's taken to consent agenda. We do it and discuss that at the rate for board member meetings and that just gets voted on almost unanimously too. But like he said, that's all discussed before, we go through the deliberations and stuff like that. One of the probably more common things that isn't seen and stood on some committee meetings is delay of a lot of stuff. Because you know, it's time to contemplate and I've had the deliberation and that's been a good thing that the board has done, worked together in that sense, like, wait a minute, and you discuss with somebody else and then maybe the decision doesn't have to be done at that time and then we've moved on from that. But no, I was not going to make a race.
Okay, thank you. The next question has to deal with staffing. There's been a couple of questions about staffing, especially staffing the current libraries at the current levels, again, the school district, both K two, K through 12 libraries, and staffing for special ed programs as well as gifted and talented programs. So, starting with you, Michael, um, give a response on staffing issues, especially focusing on, uh, those three areas you've mentioned.
All right, so, um, I'm going to start with the, the subject I know the most about and that's special education. Um, and as my librarians throughout my, my career as a student can tell you, I didn't spend a lot of time there. Um, but as far as special education, I think we need, we need to invest, there's a lot of great special ed teachers, especially at the high school level right now, who are doing amazing things, um, with what they're, with, what they're working with and the student, the, the number of students that they have. Um, so obviously I'm always in favor of additional funding and support. And I'd really like to see us look at, especially in special education, what are the programs that we don't have in place and what kind of trainings do our teachers need? Are, are, you know, with autism being so much in the news, how caught up to date with the latest programs and techniques for working with students on the spectrum are our special ed teachers? And where could they benefit from additional, um, additional trainings and information? We have a, I heard a, the story of a student at, uh, one of our local middle schools who is on the autism spectrum in non-community. And one of his lessons to teach, you know, how to take directions throughout the day is to put paper clips on a paper plate. And he does this over and over and over again as part of his school day. And, you know, the teachers are frustrated because they don't know why it's working. Well, I ask anybody in this room, do you want to sit in a room and put paper clips on a paper plate all day? You know, there's got to be a better way, you know? The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. So what are the different ways? Um, because not every stu-, every student learns at a different level, but every student learns. And it's what we're teaching them that I want to take a look at. So I think I'm at its arm unfortunately, but...
So it's, the question is regarding staffing in libraries, special ed and gifted and talented programs. And I don't know what the situation is, I have to assume that they, that they're understaffed. I have to assume that's the reason for the question. And I, I think what the board can do to help staffing is to keep as much money as possible in the general fund. Just be very tight with the money. If it's coming out of general fund, think of it in terms of teacher salaries. Is this consultant going to cost us two teacher salaries? Is it worth it? Um, and you know, is this, is this technology going to cost us four teacher salaries? Is it worth it? So the, if the trustees can try and keep as much money as possible available in the general fund for staffing, I think that teacher, that students benefit from contact with certified teachers at, at every level. So any position that can be filled with a teacher rather than an aide should be filled with a teacher. Um, teachers should be encouraged to get multiple certifications. Uh, you know, I know, I know in smaller school districts that helps so much if, if teachers have multiple certifications, it helps, rather than having a number of part-time teachers, we can have full-time teachers working in different roles. So I think that the key to staffing is just to free up more money to be spent on teachers and, and there's two ways to do that, one is to pay them more and the other is to get more teachers, so.
We deal with this issue every day. Unfortunately, of, in this approximately $55 million budget that we handle every year, 90% is taken up with salaries and benefits for our staff. 90% of our budget is for our staff. And that is everything that we do. That, that gives 10% left for heating, lights, groundwork, everything else. So we spend the vast majority on our staffing. And how do we basically get the most bang for our buck? Well, one thing that we talk about is accreditation standards. We must maintain accreditation standards so our schools are accredited and our kids, when they graduate, have a full diploma. The state of Montana's accreditation standards are fairly lax. They ask for one counselor for over 400 kids. We go over that, we have more counselors than that. Librarians, there are less, I, I, I don't know exactly the accreditation standard for that, but quite often, it's a half-time librarian in a school. We go over that. We work very hard at every juncture. We look at not only what can we afford, but what is best for the kids. Uh, your, your, your comment about the, uh, staffing with certified teachers as much as possible would be wonderful, we can't afford that. And many, many of our paras and our aides are certified teachers and they work at that certified level or at the classified pay level, but they're doing certified work. We do as much as we possibly can and we are always looking for ways to maximize the student to teacher to aide ratio. And that's the, the basis of what we do, is try and take that 90% and spread it among everyone.
Kind of right in the pigtails on the, uh, last question where we talked about the priorities and how we end the money and stuff to staff, is the thing having to do with the budget? Scott has just mentioned most of all those things. One of the problems we run into is, let me see, how about the mothers and fathers of all with third graders that have to deal with our staffing here in Missoula? That's a problem. I'd like to see us work on as a board that bump up. We do pretty well K through two because we have them for the state accreditation standards. So there's things that go on. Some of the constraints that we are under, as this is preaching to the choir here tonight, of course, come from Helena or some other city on the east coast that's got a state of Maryland around it. Those restrictions sometimes that come down from that, through federal regulations, funding of title programs, is like, you're just sometimes walking on eggshells about how our budgets work within the school board. One of the constraints of school districts is, is kind of the mechanics of timing of other government. You know, it just maybe fell out that way, it's not evil intent by anybody perhaps. State legislature's meeting right now. We really have a tough time right now saying, what's our budget going to be? We don't know at this point in time. So, school districts oftentimes deal with that. Sometimes you have to make budget decisions and that's staffing. If you have a big budget thing, there's no other way to affect that budget but staffing because, like he said, that's where all the money is. And so we have sometimes, under the constraints of those things, adjust that. And we always want to do, we've got, because we know the tech stuff coming on the road for the way the kids learn these days, has to be worked into that. And that's where librarians, tech people are coming in now to kind of usually do it together, a lot of our school librarians or the techs, uh, you know, help out with the computers and stuff, so we discuss.
Um, I'll just say that, uh, I recently, well, in the last year attended, uh, celebration of innovators that was put on by the school district because I started a garden at Paxton and helped get funding for that and establish that. Seems funny to call starting a garden an innovation, but so be it. Um, and when I was there, at the St. Zude building that was catered with activities, I just kept thinking, how much of this money could go toward staff? And I think that those questions need to be asked all the time because I think that the initiatives that we engage in as a district to support these activities need to be thought out down the line, how they affect staff, um, understanding of where that money is being spent and why it isn't going to a librarian or a para educator or another person on the, you know, the field and the playground at Newton. Um, or, you know, making a third grade classroom smaller. Um, because right now, I don't know what is actually going to happen at my son's school because there's no room for additional, um, classes to happen. So, um, I think these are all things that need to be taken into consideration when we propose new things, um, new initiatives, um, feel-good programs that may be more expensive than they should be. And I think school board needs to look at that.
Staffing, so, uh, first of all, want to say I love libraries. Libraries are wonderful. Um, my, uh, my family spent several years in, in Portland because obviously it's, it's difficult to maintain a job here in Missoula. There are no librarians in Portland. Far, there, I, I correct, correct that. They're not hired by the district, they're volunteer parents and they're paid for by the PTA. We have librarians here, we have certified librarians, it's wonderful. The schools here are clean. The janitors are wonderful. You know, I, I just can't say how lucky we are to be here. We can't go down the road that Portland has gone down. I know we have, you know, a lot of imperfect things going on in the district here and I know there's never enough staff, but, man, you just, come here, it's, it's, the schools are beautiful, you know? There's, there's not enough people, I understand that, you know? But I, I never want to go down the road of not having janitors and librarians, you know? I never want to go down the road of, 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 you know, having, uh, the special ed teachers be, you know, directed, be parent volunteers that are directed by, by the very limited staff that, that it's possible to maintain in a larger school district, you know? I, my family is so lucky to be here, I am so lucky to be here. I want to do anything I can to give back and, and, and maintain the wonderful schools that we have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Now, we have, the moderator is going to take you liberty here for a minute. Ma'am, I want you to give everyone 30 seconds, and I'm going to ask the question, one question. Okay. Everybody here's talked about a common theme of underfunding, lack of money. Senate Bill 175, Jones, Lou Jones of Conrad, spent the whole last year going from district to district across Montana, trying to figure out how we could adequately fund our schools. And he came up with what is called Senate Bill 175, that passed in the Senate with pretty good support, bipartisan support. Yesterday, in the House Education Committee, Senate Bill 175 was slashed by two-thirds. It went from 127 million dollars down to 47 million dollars. So you, as a school board, 30 seconds, each one of you have, I have to question, what will you do as a school board member to push for adequate funding in our schools? And Joe, if you can begin with you.
Ross Roots, we've got to get a hold of the people out there. Anybody you know, contact your legislature. One of the things I've heard is that it's in the House right now, we've got to get rid of those amendments. Those were the things that logged it down today, the amendments that were attached, and it can now move, I think it's going to House appropriations next? My thought, I heard that. And we've got to somehow let people know, support our own folk. Why would I say our own, because I'm a, I have a Democratic representative, and I've also heard that it's probably important to contact the opposition.
I'm sorry, I find it hard to figure this all out and give a comment in 30 seconds. I think it's a much bigger, broader topic than 30 seconds allows. I would just say that we used to support public education far more than we do now, and it has to happen again. It has to be consistent. It can't just be one House bill. It has to happen consistently, and that has to be the message that comes from all of us. We shouldn't just be the sterile entity that takes it, whatever we get, and assumes that that's satisfactory.
The legislature is in session for another 15 days. Call your legislator, email them, mail them, contact them however you can. This bill is very important to this city. You know, we've just got to keep the funding going. Without it, the high schools, we're going to have some really difficult decisions in the high schools this year, and it's just going to make you cry. So call them, email them, send them mail, however you can.
All right. And I know, dealing with the legislature in my day job, I know that whenever, there's constraints. Two things get cut first, healthcare and education. And I think when, you know, when you look at your own budgets, you don't cut out food and heat first, and that's what we're doing. We're cutting out the most important things our citizens need to survive. And in 30 seconds, my answer would be mobilize the students. You know, we all, we all, through K-12, we take students to the Capitol to look at the marble, but how often do we ask them to testify? How long, how often do we talk to them about what this issue is, and how it's affecting their day-to-day ability to stay in school and feel supported? Let's educate them and get them in front of the council members, because that is the most powerful thing we can do, and that's the voice that they need to hear, not us over and over again.
So the question is, what would I do? And to be honest, I don't have the charisma or energy to go to Helena and testify. I've done a lot of contacting legislators through email and things, and I try to be very specific in my comments. I tell you, it's not going to help the arguments in Helena when someone stands up and says that Missoula County just paid their superintendent $200,000. Those kind of decisions hurt the impression the legislature gets about how school money is being used. So we have to be careful.
In 30 seconds, I agree with everybody who said, contact your legislature. One part of being a school board member is that you're always doing your homework. Joe, Scott, and I spent an hour before this meeting and several other meetings going over exactly what we're talking about. What we're talking about in Senate Bill 175 is over, almost $400,000 that are going to be cut in basic entitlement, over $100,000 in a new program called the Data for Achievement. In 2014, we're going to have to do tons of reporting for the state and national level, and we don't have the ability to do that without this bill. Contact your legislature.
Okay. Now, we come to the last part, and that is the one-minute summation. And let's see here, we'll start with Scott.
Well, I think I said it before, you know, these are our great schools. I want to do everything I can to teach them great. It is an honor and a privilege to serve on the school board. It's also a lot of work. And I just have to say that, you know, however hard it is and however long my days are now, you know, working at the school board for free on top of my job. You know, my family is lucky to be here. I'm lucky to be here. It's what I can do to give back, and I really appreciate being on the school board.
Thank you, guys, for taking time out of your evenings to listen to us talk. You know, in summation, when I said I really want my perspective to be one that's seen in the students that I work with, to be at the forefront of those discussions, I look forward to working with and learning from whoever is on the school district and doing that homework that I need to do. I want to look at our school district and have it look like Missoula. We look like, we're a great community, but we're a community that's very different from one another, both economically, racially, language. And to have a school board that doesn't mirror that, I think, is what creates these questions and this feeling, whether it's true or not, that we have right now. So while I understand the theory of a united front, I don't know that that necessarily serves Missoula the way it should be, because Missoula's not a united front. We're a great community, but we're not a united front. We argue, we inspire each other. You know, we have differences of opinion, and that's what needs to be seen on our school board. And I feel like, you know, before we invest in a baccalaureate program or a second language for students that are probably going to graduate anyway, let's look at how do we get those students that may not be graduating, that may not have a whole life that supports that, and work from there. Because if they're graduating, those students at the top end are going to have a better education as well. And that's why I'm running for school board. Thank you.
I'm running for school board because I really enjoy school board work. Like I said, I've done it for 12 years on two different boards. I've seen a lot of superintendents come and go, different styles of managing money. I've seen, I understand the budgeting and how we have to handle it. I do feel, from what I've seen of the board meetings, and people have told me that they appear to be rehearsed, and I guess that's not a fair word, but I will work to open up the board, even if it means voting in public. I mean, we're not facing an enemy, we're facing our constituents. We're not an army. So I think it's okay to let those board meetings loosen up a little bit. And I think I can bring a lot of experience to, when the first meeting of the board, I can hit the ground running. I know we all need to go to training in Helena for the School Board Association, and then I think that I can bring a lot of experience. And I, having worked as a woman in the engineering field, I'm able to screw up my courage and look people in the eye and tell them what they don't want to hear. So I think that, not that that's, not to fight intentionally, but simply to not be afraid to disagree. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for having us here. Thanks for coming and spending your evening with us. Thanks for everybody who's stepped up to the plate. We talk a lot about engaging, and this school board and I have worked tirelessly to get people to come to our meetings, to learn everything. The Missoulian does a wonderful job. We see all sorts of programs that we highlight by the Missoulian weekly. It's great. Thank you very much for all of the time that you guys spend for us. I want to continue. This district is a great district, and we want to make it even better. Thanks very much.
Thanks for having me. Thanks for being here. And thanks for the enthusiasm for the community. Missoula is a great place. We've got a great school district. And we don't always agree. And that's how our board has been, too. We've been to some of our committee meetings on a couple of subjects that, but the other thing I would highly encourage that's great on the board, if you guys haven't seen them on NCAD or something, watch the first parts of our meetings. The kids in this district and the staff of this department dabble us regularly and stuff. So I want to keep that going. I want to, you know, keep doing the things worth positive, and all the, as the old saying goes, the only way, the only guaranteed way to make the world a better place is to improve yourself. So we want to work better as a board. We've worked towards goals like that on the board and kept those going. And we have board goals, and that main board goal, that success forever student, regardless of their circumstance. I think with most of the board, we hold that to true to heart, and it's been a fun time.
Final one. Thank you all. I have to say that about the school board meetings, people generally, unless they're amazing civic individuals, don't come to meetings unless they're worked up about something. So I would say that to get a teacher after their 10-hour day, or whatever it is they put in, to come to a school board meeting, to get a parent after their multitude of jobs, and whatever they do to come to a school board meeting, is not probable. And I wouldn't necessarily say that I would like everybody to come out to the school board meeting. What I would like is for the school board to come to these people that we're representing, the teachers, the parents, the students, and see them at work and see what's going on in their classroom, because that's the surest way to figure out what's a priority and what's not. Thanks.
On behalf of the Missoula County Democratic Central Committee, I want to thank you for coming this evening, and I want to have everybody give him a round of applause.